Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly called meeting for Tuesday, April the first. Ms. Hilber, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Dela Garza.
I am present.
Councilman Kidder.
Here.
Councilwoman Butler.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
Councilwoman Lofgren.
I am here.
Mayor Crocker.
Here. If you would, please rise to join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. Again, welcome, everyone. I see a couple of our county officials here. I want to welcome Judge Zeller and Commissioners Ort and Martin and Sexton. Welcome, gentlemen. I know we have a matter to take up here shortly. It's always good to have you here. So, Mr. Garza, before we jump into the agenda, announcements and reminders tonight?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I do have quite a bit for you this evening, so I ask for some grace. But on behalf of the Economic Development Department and Main Street, we want to invite the community to attend an evening of awards and recognition commemorating 15 years of the Victoria Main Street Program on Thursday, April 3rd, at the Leo J. Welder Center for the Performing Arts. Doors open at 6:00 PM for last-minute ticket purchases, and the event begins at 7:00 PM. Tickets can be purchased on the Welder Center website at weldercenter.org or by phone at 361-570-TKTS, or at the box office. That spells tickets, by the way.
Almost.
Almost, almost, minus the vowels, right? On behalf of the Communications Department, we want to invite our residents and the public for our second come-and-go meeting on the Venue Tax and Community Center Expansion Project that will be held on Monday, April 14th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. The meeting will be held at the Victoria Community Center at 2905 East North Street. City staff will be available to provide more information and answer questions about this initiative. We, of course, had our first session yesterday evening, and so thank you, Mayor and council members that came through. It was a great event. We had an opportunity to interact with several residents, give them, take them on a tour and answer questions that they have on the project. So it was a successful event, and we hope that we have another successful event on April 14th. With that, we also want to remind the public that Election Day is May 3rd. Early voting will take place April 22nd through the 29th, with April 3rd as the last day to register to vote. And recall that only city residents may vote on this proposition on the May ballot. On behalf of Development Services, we want to invite our residents to share their input on how federal funds should be spent on local projects and services, such as housing, neighborhood revitalization, public improvements, and nonprofit support for the next five years. Development Services will host come-and-go meetings on the 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan in the Victoria Public Library's Bronte Room on Thursday, April 3rd, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and 2:30 to 3:30 PM. Residents can also provide input by filling out the survey that was mailed with their utility bills. Surveys are also available online at victoriatx.gov/cdbgplan. Completed surveys can be mailed to City of Victoria, 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 dropped off, this is too much reading, dropped off at 702 North Main Street Suite 129, or emailed at zwendell@victoriatx.gov. Got one more. On behalf of Environmental Services and Keep Victoria Beautiful, we are celebrating Earth Day with a picnic fundraiser and raffle, benefiting public art projects and beautification grants for local businesses, churches, schools, and nonprofits. The picnic will be held on April 22nd from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM at Kay's Grove on the UHV campus, which is located between University Center and University North Buildings. Tickets are $75 per person. To buy tickets, to attend, or for the raffle, or to become a sponsor, or just to check out a website, visit victoriatx.gov/kvb.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Garza. Jumping then, we have three listed public and employee recognitions, and we'll start with the proclamation for National Library Week.
Whereas knowledge and open access to knowledge is a cornerstone of a free society, and whereas public libraries are places where people can imagine, discover, and connect to education, fellowship, and entertainment, as well as professional and personal development; and whereas in 1958 President Dwight D. Eisenhower proclaimed the first National Library Week; and whereas in 19, in the 67 years that have passed since the first proclamation, libraries, including our own Victoria Public Library, have effectively evolved and innovated to meet continuously changing needs of the community; and whereas the Victoria Public Library currently offers over 93,000 physical materials and access to almost 19,000 digital materials for checkout; and whereas in fiscal year 2024, the Victoria Public Library offered over 500 programs that were attended by almost 29,000 people; and whereas the Victoria community is fortunate to have an excellent public library staffed by exceptional and dedicated leaders and employees, offering collections, programs, services, and amenities the community seeks. Now therefore, I, Duane Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 6th through 12th as National Library Week in Victoria, Texas, and extend the thanks of our community to the Victoria Public Library for their service to Victoria.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you all for this proclamation. I am honored to accept this recognition during National Library Week as we celebrate and highlight the valuable role libraries, library workers, and library volunteers play in this community. At this time, I want to thank and recognize the members of the staff that are in the audience, as well as the Friends of the Library Board members that are here, and volunteers like the Library Advisory Board as well, and remind them that their work does not go unnoticed. So thank you all again for recognizing us and help us be the library we are to this community.
Thank you, Jessica. Then, let's see, item 2B is another proclamation. This is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of Victoria and the surrounding communities; and whereas rape, sexual assault, sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in four men experience some form of contact sexual violence in their lifetime; and whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in four boys and one in three girls will experience a rape or attempted rape before the age of 18; and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting supervisors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and action; and whereas with leadership dedication and encouragement, there's evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the crossroads area through increased education, awareness, and community involvement; and whereas the City of Victoria strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It's time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore, I, Duane Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 25th as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Victoria, Texas.
I have to tell you, I've been doing this for a few years, and it still makes me uncomfortable sometimes to hear those words, because those don't come up in pleasant conversations. But I want to tell you just a little bit about why we're here tonight. So April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. But for Victoria, I have to say that it's Sexual Assault Action Month, because some good things are happening in our community. Having done this for the last 10 years, we were stagnant for a while. We had a hard time, because each agency and each law enforcement and all of its caregivers were working in silos. We've put an end to that. We've now got a regional SART, and a SART is a Sexual Assault Response Team. And we've got people in the same room talking to each other, people like the DA, and people from law enforcement, people from advocacy agencies like Midco Family Services. And we're taking action to ensure that our systems are better, that our systems help victims respond, that we're able to respond to them in a way that's not hurtful, but helpful instead. So thank you for helping us celebrate Sexual Assault Action Month, and we'll continue the work on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny, and thank you to you and your team for all y'all do in our community. So then, item 2C is going to be the KVB April Beautification Award. Ms. Eufer, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Before we do that, I wanted to echo Mr. Garza's announcement about our first-ever fundraiser. KVB has not done one, at least since I've been here. It's been a long time, and the Board of Directors is very excited about it, especially partnering with UHV. It's going to be a really fun, fun event on Earth Day and celebrating all that Keep Victoria Beautiful does, and being thankful for all of our partners. The other thing I wanted to quickly remind the public is that we have another cleanup coming up. This is one of our big roadway cleanups. This is in partnership with TexDOT, with the Trash Off Cleanup, and also with the Gulf, Trash Free Gulf Initiative that we're a part of as well this year. So we're really partnering with other groups to make this really big. And so we encourage everyone to come out. We're hoping to get between 300 and 400 people. And remember, the more people we get, the more we clean up. We always feed everybody and make it really fun. So May 3rd is the date, Saturday, May 3rd. That is Election Day. Everybody's let me know. And that's perfect, because you go clean up, you feel like a good citizen, and then you go vote. So that's the idea. So we'll make sure everybody leaves and goes and votes. So now I will ask Meredith to come up, our board chair, to announce our winner.
Hello, Ms. Bird, and welcome.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor and council. We're doing a little, the award a little bit differently tonight, because our winner can be here, because they're celebrating their 10th anniversary, just coincidentally. And so, but I'm still here to, you guys, basically you're stuck with me for a few minutes. So our April award winner is Cotton Bells Boutique in the Town and Country Shopping Center. And Ashley Henderson's boutique is a fantastic example of a business with absolutely zero green space, surrounded on concrete, surrounded by concrete on all sides. But the care that she takes to make her little portion of that shopping center inviting and beautiful really shows. And so we're all covering up all of her nice decor in the photo, but she has planters out, she has little patio tables and little floral arrangements. And this kind of stuff doesn't go unnoticed by the community. And so I asked Ashley for a couple of talking points that I could communicate to you guys, because like I said, just coincidentally, 10 years ago today, she was opening her boutique with a six-week-old baby girl in her arms. So Ashley is a Gannado native, and her dream since she was in fifth grade was to open up a clothing boutique. She went to fashion school in New York City, and then came back home to South Texas and opened up her boutique. She was going to name it Sweet Pea at first, but then she really wanted to honor her farming roots. And her dad, who is actually in his 50th year of farming this year, named her boutique Cotton Bells. And so she really did want to bring it all back home, back to her roots. And anyway, it's a great little shop, lots of beautiful clothing and gifts inside, and really doing a fantastic job of sprucing up her space outside. And so tonight's award winner for April is Cotton Bells Boutique, and we're so proud of them.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. All right. Mr. Garza, do you have any other public and employee recognitions this evening?
I do have. Sit down. Thank you. I do have one employee recognition. I want to recognize Danielle Williams, our Economic Development Director, and so I'm going to ask her to stand up to put her on the spot to some extent, because she deserves it. But she recently completed the Community Development Institute Texas Program at Lone Star College and is now a professional community and economic developer. The certification comes from the Community Development Council, a nationally recognized nonprofit organization with the mission of advancing the practice and profession of community development. More specifically, this is a three-week program over three years that provides practical, interactive, and comprehensive training designed to meet the needs of economic and community development professionals working in a fast-paced environment. CDI Texas builds the capacity of individuals and communities to effectively and positively impact economic and social development. And so Danielle, congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. Anything further on that topic?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any items from council this evening? Seeing none. We will move into Citizens Communications. I have two cards, and we'll start with Michael Vondora. Welcome, Mr. Vondora.
Good evening. I'm Michael Vondora. I live at 2107 North Penn Jordan. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, there was lots of rain. And because of that rain, there's a lot of mud pits at Victoria Oaks Trailer Park. And I don't understand why the trailer park owner won't fix it, you know? But it's hard when you only own 17 trailer parks and you only make $80 million in investment a year. And there's no money left over to buy some gravel or asphalt or anything. But I was just wondering why he don't fix it, you know? He makes all that money. He's a multimillionaire, and, you know, he just don't want to fix it. He has no interest in it. He's stonewalling, and it's just, right now, there's just ruts and mud all over the place. And there is some vandalism in Trailer 29. I mean, it should be condemned or be called a public nuisance. A door open, 12 broken windows, different doors open. And, you know, there's a lot of crime and vandalism in it, you know? SWAT team made a drug raid and stuff, you know? Lucky for the tenants, you know, he didn't make parole and stuff. And I would like him to take care of his trailer park, you know? People can't complain, because they might get evicted. And, you know, I think he should just change the monthly rate to 410 a month to like maybe 300 a month, just for the inconvenience of it. I mean, if you were eating in a restaurant and you seen mud holes all over the place, you probably wouldn't go there. But it's kind of hard to move a trailer house, you know, at $4,000 to move. And, you know, when they raise it like $50, you're screwed if you stay. You're screwed if you move. And, you know, I would like to see him make some improvements in it instead of just a minimum required. And it's a shame, the only reason he fixes it up because the City of Victoria and the legal department get involved. But I would like him to take care of his trailer park, because he has done a very poor job at taking care of it. Thanks, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vondora. And then the last card to have is Mr. Lee Keeling.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. How are you all today?
Great.
Good. Well, look, unless it's a, you know, a pretty good April Fool's prank, you're going to hear Ms. Connolly talk to you later on tonight about the expansion of the Lone Tree Walking and Biking Trail. And I heard about that today, and I wanted to be sure I had an opportunity to come express my interest in that and my support for it. I think that in the course of going through the active transportation plan that the city has gone through, one of the things Victorians were quite clear about was the fact that they would like to see us develop more trails. And the great thing about trails is, compared to other public amenities, they can be relatively inexpensive, because a large part of what you do there is just simply imagination and using some imagination to create a way to get across somewhere that nobody thought of before. And this is a great example, because this new extension appears to me to take advantage of a brushy part of the creek that goes across behind Leary Lane over to the existing trail. I think it's part of the creek, I can't remember the name of the creek. But it's, I've passed it many times. I've looked over there and thought, boy, wouldn't it be cool if somebody put a little trail right along that bank? It'd be great. Well, here you go. So this is a great, this is a great project. I'm very much supportive of it, and I think you'll find the members of the community to be the same. Thanks a bunch, and I appreciate your time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Keeling. All right. That'll close out Citizens Communication, and we'll move on to item C, which is Items with Public Hearing. And we'll begin with item C1.
Item C1, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 21, The Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Victoria Code of Ordinances, item on first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So if you can't believe it, it's been over a year since we first adopted the UDO. And there are a few amendments and housecleaning items I have for you tonight. I promise you, they're pretty painless. So just to jump right in, the first amendment we're asking for approval on is to change the minimum lot size for cluster homes. It was inadvertently put as 4,000 square feet per lot size. That was supposed to be 4,000 per dwelling unit. If you looked in the specific land use section for cluster homes, you had to have a minimum of four for cluster home development. Four units on a 4,000-square-foot lot is just not feasible with parking and all of those things that you added too. So we are asking to make the minimum lot area 12,000 square feet, and then also add back cottage lots. Cottage lots were in our previous ordinance for areas in our historic districts only. We thought that with the relaxed plating standards, who would kind of take care of those small lots? But we found that a lot of those existing lots that are below 5,000 square feet that would really qualify for these cottage lots were platted after the first subdivision ordinance in the 1950s. So we have found that we need to bring back the cottage lot standard. And that is, again, cottage lots are only allowed in historic districts. And then we are also adding the land use of data centers and crypto mining farms under the Infrastructure tab of the Land Use table. So all of these have specific use standards when we get to Division 3. So again, this is the cottage home regulations that we just copied and pasted from our old ordinance. But it is a 4,000-square-foot lot in the historic districts, provided that they have an entry-level front porch that covers at least 50% of the building facade and a minimum depth of five feet. And then vehicular access from the front, like for garages or carports, have to be set back, the structures have to be set back at least seven feet from behind the front facade. And that's all in keeping with the downtown character or historic district characters. For use, specific standards for data centers and crypto mining farms. All of our research pointed that the noise, the hum of the units to keep the units cool is really what is the nuisance complaints that other cities have heard. And that sort of kicks in on a 60-decibel level. So we are proposing to have a limit that any data center or crypto mining farm shall not produce more than 55 decibels sound at any time. The crypto mining farms were definitely the more egregious offenders in other communities. And so we also put a stipulation that they have to be at least 500 feet from any residential use in those specific use standards. Data centers are a little bit more flexible, because a lot of times the data centers are actually in buildings. And so the energy code and insulation and all of those requirements generally mean that data centers inside buildings don't produce any sort of noise. So we don't have that residential separation requirement. So the next proposal is to expand the original townsite historic district. A lot of people don't realize that actually stops at Water Street and has since it was first created. And the reason for that is there is a prohibition on manufactured homes within the historic districts with the revitalization of downtown, especially south of Water Street being predominantly floodplain. As you know, we've had a lot of flood bioutlots down there. There's not a lot of redevelopment because of the floodplain and because of floodplain requirements, too, with manufactured homes. We just felt it's really appropriate to just go ahead and make the original townsite historic district the entire original townsite. We're not seeing the redevelopment of that south area with manufactured homes. The next section is to make sure that there's not a conflict between our site plan requirements. So in the very beginning section of the ordinance, there's a threshold for when you have to bring a site into compliance, and that's 30%. So we had certain developments that were under the 30% threshold that did not require a site plan, but were requiring landscaping, because they were over 25%. So this is to align those to make sure that landscaping is not triggered without a site plan. This next section is on relief procedures. State law requires that there be public notice on use variances of 200 feet. But we do have those specific use standards that have use separations that are greater than 200 feet. So for example, the data center, the crypto mining farm that I just explained, we put a regulation that they'd have to be over 500 feet. This amendment says that we will follow the notification. If it's a use-specific ordinance variance, then we would follow that same distance for the notification. So if the applicant is requesting, let's say they wanted to vary from the 500-foot separation standard, we would notify all properties within 500 feet to make sure that everybody that's being affected has the proper notice. And then there's quite a few definitions that we needed to tweak. Accessory use is a pretty simple one, but we realized it was completely missing in the draft. So it's obviously use that's subordinate to the primary use of a parcel of land. Of course, we added the crypto mining farm and data center, so we had to define those. Also added that cottage homes are single-family dwellings. And that is all of the proposed changes I have for tonight on the UDO. And hopefully you won't see me again for at least another six months on this.
Are there any questions for Ms. Vondora? No? Thank you. So with that then... No, thank you. Appreciate it. So with that then, I will open the public hearing on the proposed ordinance to the Unified Development Ordinance. If there's anyone would like to speak on that, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain any motions with respect to item C one.
I move we adopt item C one.
Second.
Got a motion as second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And C one passes first reading. All right, item D, the consent agenda.
D one, adoption of minutes for the special help meeting held on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five and the regular meeting held on March eighteenth. D two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four of the city code for various changes in parks and recreation fees and fire department and police department fees, second and third reading. D three, an ordinance designating a reinvestment zone that the real property and structures to be located on combined sixty-seven point five seven acres, located the Lone Tree Industrial Park Two on Wayne Watkins Drive, Victoria, Texas, establishing the boundaries of the other matters relating thereto, providing for severity and declaring effective date, second and third reading. D four, approving resolution of vendor agreement for City of Victoria fireworks with adventure fireworks in the amount of seventy-five thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. D five, approving resolution and interlocal agreement with Calhoun County for the use of City of Victoria's Public Safety Radio System. D six, a resolution designating the city manager as authorized official to accept an award for the office of the Governor of Texas for fiscal year twenty-six Operation Lone Star Grant Program in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-one cents. D seven, approving a resolution designating the city manager as authorized official for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority, MVCPA grant, designating Sergeant Robert Rogers as a program director and designating Chief Financial Officer Gilbert P. Reyna, Jr., CPA as financial officer. D eight, approving the annual purchase of uniforms for the Victoria Fire Department for, for Gales Incorporated in established estimated amount not to exceed ninety thousand. D nine, approving resolution, the purchase of Motorola APX Next radios for public safety departments in the amount of not to exceed four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. Have a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Got a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. So then we will jump into section E, action items for council discussion. Our first item, I'll go ahead and call because my name's on it for some reason, but that is support for House Bill four-two-two-two, which is a Victoria County-led effort that would implement a countywide hotel occupancy tax. You all have information there in front of you that was provided by the county. And I know Judge Zeller's here to give us some additional information and please come forward and would love to hear what you have to say about this. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, members of council. Appreciate the chance to be here and to also have three of our four commissioners with us, as well as our airport director, Lenny Lorena, here with me today. As the mayor said, our purpose is to, in being here, is to request a resolution of support from city council for the county's effort in pursuing legislation that would enable us to implement a countywide hotel occupancy tax. The purpose and use document you have in front of you spells, excuse me, spells out the history and background of that. But for those in attendance or those watching it online who may not have seen that, Victoria County currently has the ability to implement this outside the city limits. But to do so within the city limits would require special enabling legislation. That legislation is House Bill forty-two-twenty-two, which would give Commissioners' Court the ability to implement that hotel occupancy tax. The legislation additionally adds as an eligible category of usage, repairs and improvements at a county-owned airport, which is our primary effort for having researched this over the years and our primary reason for pursuing it now. It would enable us to allocate these funds to some much, much-needed capital projects at the airport, which we feel is in keeping with the purpose of the hotel occupancy tax to begin with. That is to promote tourism and then the hotel and convention industry. We are also prepared to pledge, if we are successful in this effort and the city is successful in its effort with the community center project, we're prepared to pledge a hundred thousand dollars a year from this new revenue source going towards that convention, community center expansion project. So we see it as a win-win for really all the stakeholders in the community and especially at, at our county-owned airport. I know that each of y'all are very much aware of the economic impact that that has in the community. The study that we did about a year and a half ago showed about forty million dollars of economic activity that's generated from the airport. And we see this as a way to further enhance that while also being in keeping with the purpose and goal of, of this revenue source. I mentioned Lenny is with us today. I don't want to steal his thunder in reporting this, but March ended with a record number of enplanements at the airport, one thousand three hundred and sixty-three, if I'm not mistaken, a record number. So we plan to build upon that, the successes there, both in the number of enplanements and also the enhancements and structures there at the airport. So happy to answer any questions you might have related to that. I'll note that the Victoria Chamber of Commerce and the VEDC and the Port of Victoria, as well as the State Hotel and Lodging Association have passed either letters or resolutions of support for this effort. And we'd very much like to include the city council's resolution of support along with those as we push this forward in, in the legislature.
Very good. Any question? I noticed that you didn't want to steal Lenny's thunder, but you totally did.
But I did anyway.
Way to go, Lenny.
We appreciate Lenny. He's doing fantastic work out there and really we're seeing a lot of incredible things happening and he runs a great operation out there.
Absolutely. No, and congratulations on the success and keep building. So in front of us tonight is a, is a resolution then, and I won't read all of it, but just hit the highlights on it, which the county is asking for approval. And basically it says, whereas Victoria County is pursuing legislation during the eighty-ninth regular session of the Texas Legislature, House Bill forty-two-twenty-two, that would authorize the county to implement a hotel occupancy tax of up to two percent countywide. And whereas the, this would grant Victoria County the same hotel occupancy tax authority as eighty-nine other counties, enabling the county to apply the occupancy tax uniformly to the use, to use the revenues in accordance with established categories that promote tourism, hotel and convention industry. Whereas this has the support from the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association, Chamber of Commerce and Victoria Economic Development Corporation, and is intended to be used, is the revenue would be used to enhance county-owned airport infrastructure, as is done in other Texas jurisdictions, and is critical to enhancing Victoria Regional Airport, a key economic and transportation hub. Victoria County plans to contribute one thousand, hundred thousand annually from the hotel occupancy tax revenue toward the community center expansion project planned by the City of Victoria, maximizing the impact of this occupancy tax funding for both county and city priorities. Whereas Victoria City Council recognizes that passage of HB forty-two-twenty-two will enhance regional infrastructure, attract new tourism, increase business activity and improve key public resources to the benefit of both residents and visitors. And then it concludes with, now therefore be it resolved by the Victoria City Council, that it hereby expresses full support for HB forty-two-twenty-two and the ability of Victoria County to implement a countywide hotel occupancy tax, including authorization for use for airport-related improvements. And we encourage our representatives to move this legislation forward swiftly on behalf of our community. So I think that's the, pretty well the gist of it there. And I think it captures, captures what, what you guys are trying to do here.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Are there any questions?
No, I move we adopt D one.
A second.
Got a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you are.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all for being here. Always good to see you, gentlemen. All right, then let's move on. Action items, item E two.
E two, approving resolution of budget amendment to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, adopted budget for the Community Center and Fairgrounds Project in the amount of three million.
I don't have a formal presentation for this item, but I did want to remind council that as part of the thirty-five million dollar budget for the Community Center project, we are targeting five to six million dollars coming from the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. And so to be clear, this budget amendment is not an addition to the thirty-five million dollar budget. This is inclusive of that. And this is needed at this time because if the venue tax effort is successful, our timeline has us awarding the contract to the architect in May. And so we need the cash to be able to do the contract. And so we're basically lining up the ducks in the row, leading up to that, being optimistic that we'll get to that point. This money already was, this budget amendment, I should say, was approved by the Sales Tax Development Corporation at the recent meeting. And this is part of that formal step, which brings it in front of you for consideration.
Any questions on this? All right. Are there any motions with respect to E two?
Move to approve item E two.
A second.
Got a motion as second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And E two passes. Item E three.
E three, authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Victoria Engineering Incorporated, DBA Urban Engineering, for engineering services for improvements to the city's boat ramp and kayak takeout point in Riverside Park in the amount of a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Good evening, Ms. Conley.
Good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity as we're awarding this professional services agreement to Urban for a grant-funded project because it's been such a really long time that I've talked about this to council and publicly. And so I wanted to kind of walk through what, where we are in the process and how this is kind of working out. Because we did apply for the entire project, planning and construction, but the way that it gets awarded is it's in two parts. Okay, so we have a, a planning phase and a construction phase. So, and I also wanted to mention too, that, that part of the reason for this is because this is pass-through funding that's coming from US Fish and Wildlife Service to TPWD. And so that, that's kind of what's driving this, how it gets awarded, the planning phase first and then the construction phase. And what happens is you complete all of the planning first and then you resubmit for the construction portion and then that portion is awarded. So it's two phases. We applied in spring twenty-twenty-three, we were awarded the planning phase only and that total was eighty-four thousand, five hundred. So the COV share, that is twenty-five percent, which is twenty-one, one twenty-five. The, the actual came in obviously over the eighty-four, five, which is why the total contract is more than that. But we have budgeted, the city has budgeted for the entire project. So the excess funds that we need to cover the rest of it will be coming from the construction portion for now and then we can readjust that in the future. I also wanted to mention the term. It actually started last April, but it goes through six-thirty, twenty-seven. So that's the point at which we would need to be complete with the planning phase before we could apply for the construction phase. So the contract amount for the engineering is the one oh five, three eighty-nine. And I have that starred because there are some possibilities of things we could discover along the way that may increase that. If that happens, of course, we'll come back to, you know, whatever we need to do in terms of the amendment on that. The TPWD's portion though, doesn't change. That's still the sixty-three, three seventy-five of what they originally awarded, which is seventy-five percent. And that includes the, where we, what's going to be done is the engineering and surveying, the environmental and the permitting, which includes, the permitting is pretty heavy duty because it's on the waterway. And what's happening is we're, the current kayak takeout points moving to a different place along the riverbank. And where it's moving to is previously undisturbed. So we'll have to do extensive work there. And they need to make sure that the environmental assessment is complete and won't cause problems along the bank there. So there'll be, where the kayak takeout point right now is proposed is kind of across the street and the green part, the, you know, the grassy portion from where the Texas Zoo is and that Lions Club Pavilion. Where it is now is on the other side of the pump house. And so we're going to put in a flood-resistant floating dock, ADA accommodations, parking and lighting. It's a huge, it'll be a huge improvement over the current site because the current site's pretty dangerous and steep. And it's also, it's also horribly overgrown over there. It's sort of like there's a lot of trees overhanging and stuff. And then the boat ramp's not going to move, but it will be very much improved. If anybody's been out there, it, it's, it's just been, it's kind of deteriorated over time. We need to redo all the concrete, expand that. And then there's going to be a wooden dock and, and some other things over there, but that site is across from where the rose garden is. And that is all I have for that item. If you have any questions, like I said, I mostly just wanted to kind of provide a, a recap of, of how the grant process is going.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for Ms. Conley?
I, I had a question, simply just out of curiosity. Will the current site be shuttered or deconstructed, the one that's?
There, you know, that's a good question and I'm not really sure about that. There is some infrastructure, I mean, there's the concrete and then there's some metal steps. It won't go to anywhere. So, but that could also be a cost. That portion of it's not included in the budget. So that would be a parks item.
Anything else?
No, much needed.
Yes, agreed, agreed. I know that that takeout point now is, calls a concern from a safety standpoint.
Well, one of the reasons why TPWD was interested in funding this is because there aren't very many, along the riverbank, there aren't very many easy and accessible places to take kayaks out. And that affects the Texas Safari all the way from, I don't even know where it starts. It's way up the Guadalupe. So.
San Marcos, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a really long way if they go. So yeah, well, I mean, it is.
When you're on the river, that's a long way.
Yeah.
That's why it's the toughest race.
Very good. Thank you for the information. Anything further? Okay.
I'm just going to stay because my, my other item is also next.
Okay. Do we have any motion with respect to item E three?
Motion to approve item E three.
A second.
Got a motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item E three is approved. And then city manager reports. Do you want this one? You want me to take?
No, it's okay. So we have, we have two, we have two items for you this evening.
I wasn't next.
What? No, you are next. You're next. Don't pay attention to that.
Okay.
No, you are next. So we have two, we have, we have two city manager reports for you this evening. And of course, Katie already mentioned to you, she's first to provide another update to you on a trails grant opportunity. Katie?
Okay.
That's wrong. That's last.
Yeah, that's, that's from last.
I mean, we can do it again, but I think we hit that one pretty hard, so.
Okay. There we go.
There we go.
That's fine. Okay, oop, no, I'll wait till you put up. What? There we go. All right. So as we discussed and you all are aware, the city is putting together a grant proposal to text out for the transportation alternatives fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And just, I thought, you know what, I should probably mention, this grant only comes up every two years. It's not an every year grant. So what I want to talk about is what it is, where it is, why it is, how much we think it's going to cost, how long it will take, things like that. So this portion, and I have a picture of it that's going to show it better, but I just wanted to say, again, the ten-foot wide sidewalk is what's classified as a multi-use trail. And that is for walking and biking and the, the big width of that has to do with safety. But it's going to go. But it's going to go, um, from Guy Grant through the Shenandoah neighborhood along the Green Belt Park. And then, um, it's going to go across Mockingbird Lane, and I'll talk a little bit more about the safety measure there. Along the drainage downfall bordering the Cube Smart Storage, then it's going to go across Leary Lane and continue along another outfall that's bordering, it's in between two private properties, and it's going to tee into the Lone Tree Hike and Bike Trail. So it will connect that. And so this is a picture, the orange is where the trail, trail will actually run, and if you see the intersection there where, ooh, and I wanted to use the laser pointer, where is that? Is, which monitor? Oh, there it is, okay. So this portion here, here's where the, um, the crossing is going to go, the safety crossing, that's the portion that goes across Mockingbird Lane. These little pieces here, the sidewalk stops at the end of private property there, so there's a gap between the sidewalks there and where it would need to connect with the trail here. So those little pieces will be added, and this, of course, will go all the way across here. And he, the city is planning to redo Guy Grant Road with a 10-foot wide sidewalk across this furthest side of it. So when that's complete, this will all connect through here to the trail, and then all the way out to, there'll be the sidewalk along from, also from Mockingbird, all the way over to Salem. So that's the, the, this portion of the project is, um, a little over 3,600 linear feet of concrete sidewalk. We will, of course, be adding the ADA ramps. The pedestrian hawk system, which if you think about, um, the, the hawk system, there's one at UHB. That's basically just a signalized crossing to help pedestrians get across safely. And then there'll be a pedestrian bridge, which I believe is across Lone Tree Creek because you can see the ditch there, so when it tees into it, there'll have to be a little bridge over where it's super deep. And then, uh, of course, also lighting. There's a little bit of lighting through the Shenandoah portion, but the rest of it will need some, uh, to make sure that people are safe when they're walking at night. The total estimated project is 2 million, 2.1 million. Local cost share is 20%, so that puts us at 429,000. This project aligns, uh, really, in fact, it's mentioned specifically in the city's active transportation master plan, and I want to say publicly thank you to Mr. Keeling to come, uh, give his support for the project. One of the things that will increase our, um, our, to really strengthen our application in the minds of the funder is a lot of really strong community support. That's one of the big things that they're looking for, so I appreciate that community support. And basically what this project will do is it will, um, allow for everybody to be able to walk through this area safely. These are things that TechDOT really looks, looks for, safety, connectivity, um, inclusivity, things like that. It will ease the congestion for residents. Because this is a transportation alternatives grant, they're looking for ways to help residents in, when they fund these projects, ways to help people not take motorized vehicles. So that's a big deal in, in increasing the trail network is another thing that, um, that's our goal, that matches their goal. And then, um, other planned improvement, oh, here's where I mentioned that, I forgot about this, I added this late. The Guy Grant improvements that are going to go between Salem and Mockingbird, then it also includes a 10-foot wide sidewalk, so that will be connecting. It, um, it, it's also a big deal again in terms of, um, safety because there are two elementary schools this will connect. Along with it will also help, there will be some connection, it's kind of a long way, but with East High School as well. And then, of course, there's shopping and churches, everybody knows, you know, along, uh, Mockingbird Lane, and then, of course, over on Salem as well. So it brings all that together. And I wanted to mention because this has been mentioned before about the drainage improvement. The main issue was, is this portion right down here? Because it's very overgrown, and this is the portion that's between Leary Lane and Lone Tree, Hike and Bike Trail. These are two private properties. This portion of the drainage that needs to be, um, cleared is something that will be, um, handled by the Drainage District, um, before this project will be going forward.
Do we own that full, sufficient right-of-way through there for the project?
There's a tiny piece that we would need to get.
Okay.
One tiny piece, but most of it, yes.
Which Drainage District?
Oh, I don't know.
Three.
Three.
Okay. So the process in the timeline is the preliminary application I submitted on February 18th. We should know by the end of next week, before the end of next week, whether or not we're invited to, um, submit a detailed application, which then that will be due June 20th, and then we would hear about it in a word in, uh, this coming October. And that is all I have. Are there any other questions?
Ms. Loughlin?
Well, you've already submitted, but I'm curious why you couldn't have included the trail all the way up to Salem Road as part of the grant instead of just from, from Guy Grant?
Well, that portion is going to happen at the same time the re, the street reconstruction happens.
Yeah, but the, if it could have been included in the grant, couldn't the, the grant have paid for that portion, and then it would have been less for the city to pay for the rest? It's too late, you already submitted the, the thing, but I'm, I'm just curious. And maybe that's a, a selling point for the trail, I don't know, for the grants, that you're going to, that it's going to be extended by the city. But I was just curious why, when you submitted the grant, it wasn't for all the way up to Salem Road?
It's all about timing, uh, Councilman.
I beg your pardon?
And I have to wait for that award, and I don't start this project till I get a notification. We got engineering coming up this coming year. That award would take longer. We just kept them separate. So we can keep Guy Grant moving.
The option would be to build Guy Grant without a sidewalk in the hopes that the grant would come later, I guess. But we were pursuing it as treating the Guy Grant project with the sidewalks as its, as its own project, since the timelines are offset.
Okay.
We also applied for that in the past. We'd applied for that in the past, and it was, um, had feedback from TechDOT that, that they weren't really happy with that project.
Well, certainly, you know, I know when we've talked about the Guy Grant project in the past, one of the concerns that's been brought up appears that the lack of sidewalks, and just as you pointed out in here, there's an elementary school at each end of Guy Grant.
Right, and a lot of residential in between the two.
Right, right, and so certainly I can see where this would, would score high on the, uh, improving safety metric.
It, it actually does hit pretty much every single one of their, with the possible exception of the project readiness with, they look at the acquisition of RightofWay, but it's such a teeny piece that I don't anticipate that taking a long time or being a problem. But this project hits every single one of our other criteria in terms of merit.
Good, good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, and let us know what you hear.
Absolutely will, of course.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And then we're going to finish it off with another annual report. I believe this actually is the last one.
This, he did say the best for last.
I did, absolutely.
Is that so everybody could fuss at you through there? So, oh, no, that's budget, never mind.
They'll have plenty to, to fuss about. They'll have plenty on that, so. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilor. Thank you for, uh, allowing me the opportunity to present my annual report, uh, on IT. Just like everyone else, I'm just going to go through an overview, I'm going to deal with some metrics. The one thing about the metrics is while they're there, I'm not going to really highlight on there, but I'm going to use them to tell a story about what are our challenges we've had, and what are some of the opportunities that we're going through. So, IT Department, we have 11 staff members, and we maintain that same staffing level for the past 20 years, excluding our SCADA. Our SCADA technician was a new one, but we've had 10 personnel for the last 20 years. And certainly during that time, as you can see, our responsibilities have greatly increased. We've got now over 31 network locations. We support access, uh, data devices from access points to Zebra printers. Our software installations, that's a crazy number. Councilman Loughlin, I actually used our AI to determine this, but there was 450,000 instances of software we're running on our machines that we have to keep updated. So, huge number. And since it's one of the metrics I was talking about, and this is actually our vulnerabilities, and this is, I'm, I'm using that to, to tell some of our challenges. So we really face the significant challenges. We were constantly behind the curve ball as far as getting these updates done. Where it was just constantly, we could never get them patched. As soon as we get most of them patched, Microsoft would issue out some new ones the next month, and we'd be back behind that curve. So in this case, situation, uh, we partnered with a, uh, with a, a provider, a vendor, and so they're able to actually go through, and they helped us to be able to get our patches down. So now if you look at it coming into there, we're down on our significant and high down to less than 50 on a multi basis. So that's an opportunity where we saw a challenge, and we reached out to a vendor rather than using FTE persons to, to help us with that. This is another instance where, these are our security event logs, so we had a same situation where, I'm going to use June as an example. That is 732 million event logs that we have to sort through to find out where we have security issues at. So we partnered with that same vendor. We went back to them and said, look, this is not something, we tried this. It's literally looking for a needle in a haystack. So we reached with that vendor, said, hey, we can go through that, and so out of that 732 million, they came back and they were able through use of AI and their software, uh, bring that down to 3,500 investigations in June that they had to look at. And then when it finally filtered down to us, we had for that month less than 29 instances where we had to go and actually look and see what was the problem. So a great resource there. This one is actually, um, with our email filtering. We, uh, we have an email filtering solution on, on here, and it eliminates a lot of our malware that's coming in from our email. And as the bottom right-hand side, you can see we're in that green region as far as for our region, industry and size, we're in the green, so this solution is doing a great job. It's doing a really fantastic job. Before I move on to the next slide, I want you to look at the upper right-hand side where it's talking about that total clicks per month. That's an important part because that is almost 5,500 clicks per month. These are clicks that our employees click on valid links and attachments. These are not malicious links. These are numbers that they have to click on to do their daily job is clicking on these links. It's a PDF or, uh, Excel spreadsheet or, or a link. So that goes into where we're at into this one, which is our phishing email. So this is our phishing simulation activity. We send out phishing emails twice a month, uh, on that, and, uh, my sole purpose is to try to catch some of these big whales out here. There's a couple of them out there that still think I haven't gotten them yet, but I've got time.
Did you get me?
I think I did.
It took them like four years, though.
That's, that's fine, that's fine. I'll, I'll work on that. I'll get that, but there, there's a couple over there just smiling and saying, yeah. Mr. Lee, it's like, it's really hard because I cannot send him anything that has to do anything with phishing or hunting. Like, how can I, how can I fish this guy? So, but the important part is that this is an area where you can see medium risk. We're, uh, that bottom right-hand side, we're showing that, you know, we're not doing so great there. And what this is with these phishing emails is when they click, and so the very, very little bit of red that you're seeing on there, that represents how much employee will click on one of our phishing emails. That represents about 10 to 15 a month, which isn't a lot. But granted, all it takes is one malicious email for them to click on that would cause that issue. So this is the area that we're, we're concerned with that, so. And that's again where it's a challenge, and so we're trying to address that. So this next slide is we're transitioning into accomplishments, but it's also having to deal with that we just implemented that, but it's also dealing with this whole thing about those clicks. So this is our, um, DMARC filtering, so domain-based message authentication reporting and compliance. So this is a really great way to be able to, to use with the other was our web filtering solution, email filtering solutions that help, help keep us from having those clicks occur. This one allows us to be able to ensure that if Mr. Garza says he sends an email, we know it's coming from him. It's not being spoofed by somebody else, and that's usually where you'll see a lot of activity is that they see it's coming from somebody within the organization, and they're going to click on it. So, uh, we've also implemented, um, so now we're transitioning again more into accomplishments. So we implemented our multi-factor authentication, so now all city employees are required to use multi-factor authentication when they're off, off the network. The police department, as part of the, uh, this year's CEGIS requirements, is they're now required to use MFA when they're logging on a computer if they're in their office or in their patrol car or at home. It's required now for, for them. Some of the other upgrades we did with, uh, security was our camera upgrade at Surf Row Shooting Plant. Those cameras were over 10 years old. Uh, this allows them better visibility, increased accessibility. Before, they could only view those cameras at one workstation in their control station. Now there's multiple views that they can view from any of the, uh, any of the offices that are in there. The big improvement is there, if you look at the bottom right-hand side where that arrow's pointing, it's really hard to see, but there's a truck there, and it's got a little triangle, teal-colored triangle by that. That actually is, as a vehicle is moving through the plant, it's actually highlighting and pinpointing that and detecting that, so an operator can definitely visualize and see that vehicle and also trace back its movements as it's going through there, so. Great, great opportunity there. Network, we also had that opportunity to upgrade our firewall, and, uh, this particular firewall at the Surf Row Shooting Plant has additional definitions. They're strictly designed for our SCADA, so it's detecting any kind of malware on our SCADA network. Again, for those, it's a supervisory control and data acquisition network that we have. We also replaced our switches that gave them greater bandwidth to handle all those camera feeds, and it also integrated directly into the firewall to provide better visibility into their network. Internet, we added additional internet connection. This is the second one here, uh, at 700 Main that we're, allows us to keep us from failing off if we were to lose our internet connection. It's using a, um, solution called an SD-WAN, software-defined wide-area network. And it's putting those two together and making it one solution. We also, as where the public safety headquarters comes online, they will have their own internet connection, and we'll bring that into that and also, uh, make that just a part of the SD-WAN. Voice over IP, uh, this is our, our phone system, so we upgraded our phone system and voicemail to the latest version. That previous version servers were over five years old. Uh, the servers were replaced during this, uh, upgrade also. We also, prior to that, uh, Microsoft had changed our authentication method, how we were delivering, uh, voicemails to emails, and the majority of our e, uh, employees get their email, voicemails through email versus the, on the phone. And so March of, uh, last month, they actually broke it, uh, and, uh, their authentication method. So luckily, we'd already scheduled this out. We were able to upgrade it and, and put that in place, and so voicemails are now going into emails. A new feature is allowing the use of an app on the mobile phone, so now we can actually have, uh, the city-issue phones, phone numbers being answered on a city-issued phone. And then this important one, our P25 radio refresh. So all of our public safety radios, now this is including police, fire, county, uh, the sheriff's department, volunteer fire department, anyone that was, had a public safety radio was upgraded with new talk groups. Now, this is with assistance of DPS. A great, huge shout-out to those guys that come down and helped us. We had 629 radios that were programmed with new state encryption, uh, state-issued encryption keys and new talk groups, uh, that allowed us to be able to talk to other state agencies, notably the DPS. So D, uh, 46 DPS radios were added to our system. Like I said, it took 10 DPS technicians, two city employees, two county employees, two and a half days to program these radios. So again, uh, we wouldn't have been able to do that without DPS, so again, thank, thanks for them. Okay, uh, we also implemented an AI-based ticketing and asset tracking system, so now employees are able to search their knowledge base before submitting a ticket. They can also ask AI for assistance, better visibility into our technicians workload. I pretty much asked this AI, I was like, how many software instances do we have? And we have 450,000 software instances, so it's pretty cool. Okay, now we're going to transition to some of our challenges. So our challenges in IT are just like any of the other departments that you've heard, whether it's including turnover and limited budgets, and then how it impacts our departments. You know, so we've got, um, rapid technology changes require constant updates and training for IT. Every year, it seems like we've got something new that we've got to learn and try to, to roll out. Limited budget constraints, um, we talked about it, our budget's always, my budget's always going up, and it's usually, but it's on the software side. So it's a little hard on, to get the, uh, the equipment upgrades that we should, uh, in a timely manner. Staff turnover impacts project continuity and knowledge retention. That's a big one when we have an employee leave. That's a big one when we have an employee leave. I have an employee leaving in a couple of months, and I'm scrambling to, to make sure I can retain as much knowledge from him before that gentleman leaves. And then we had a reliance on vendors to offset additional FTEs. So in the past, what we've been able to do, what we've been able to keep those going is that we've been using vendors, software, everything working, using technologies to, to, to reduce that count. But it's come at a price, and that's what we're seeing, is that vendors every year continue to raise their prices. And so we're becoming over-reliant on them, and so those price increases put a strain on our budget. A big one is our ADA compliance. So this is some new laws that are coming in effect, it becomes effective next year. And so that's one of the things we're actively looking at right now, is that we do have a position right now that is our web technician that's supposed to help with that. But that is, we have over 800 pages currently right now, and we have over 400 documents. The webpages themselves, they're okay, we, we do a pretty good job on that. It's just these documents, so like this presentation, when we convert it over into a PDF and we upload it, a lot of this is not ADA compliant. And so we've already run some of the numbers, and we're getting anywhere from a typical document, five to nine hours to convert and make it ADA compliant. So we're, we're evaluating that right now, as far as whether or not it's to our best interest to, to reach out. We're reaching out to vendors right now to see, is it better to go with a vendor? And then reduce an FTE position? And so we're, we're tossing numbers around to see what that's going to look like.
Can you give an example of what you would, what that means to make this ADA compliant?
So right off the bat, that, this screen right here is, I have one, one of my technicians is doing right there, and he screamed at me when I put this presentation up, because it's like, "Oh my God, white on yellow." That is just not something that you can actively describe that. So everything that you have in there has to be something where, if you have somebody that's hard of seeing, that is, they can use a screen reader, that they can look at that and see exactly, and read that, and see what's happening over there. Every image has to have an alt text, and so, and it has to be a lot easier, easier readability, greater readability. So there's, just not just, you know, just saying that you can put it all on black and white text. There's still some more things that you have to do.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, we, we do have some challenges in IT on the SCADA side. We're still waiting on the grant funding, that's still a part of there, so our upgrade is still on hold. And unfortunately, right now, what's happening now is that these devices that we have in, out in the field, the cost to repair them are now exceeding our cost to replace those. So it's actually cheaper for us to replace those, so we're sort of in a, in a pattern there. So, that's still a concern.
And I know that, oh, what happened?
What, what, no. Is this infected? Somebody thought that was funny. My blood pressure didn't think it was funny. Okay, never mind. Go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna, I was actually gonna make a, what's up with my mouth? I know that the SCADA topic is probably something new to our new council members, and so we'll make it a point at our next meeting to catch you up on some of the history around the challenges with our SCADA system and the, and the cost to upgrade it, and where we sit on that. But long story short, we're pursuing some grant funds to help pay for that, and these grant funds will take forever, basically. But we can get more, more into that in our meetings.
Okay. Okay, some of our opportunities, obviously, one of the big ones is more money for additional software for CGIS, so we actually have to put in some software for, in our police laptops to be able to track and remotely wipe if we need to. So that's another fun thing with, with CGIS. We need to look at a replacement of our aging network switches. We've got some switches that are approaching end-of-life, so that's going to be a important one. These are our core switches, is more what I'm concerned about. These are the ones that are connecting City Hall to 700 Main, 700 Main to connecting to all the fire departments, public works, and such as that. As far as Mr. Garza's succession planning, we're going to be adding an additional Assistant IT Director. So that will be something adding to that.
That sounded weird.
Sorry, Mr. Garza's succession planning?
Yeah, you make it sound like my, like the succession plan for me.
As a part of the city's.
Yes, the, the next Assistant Director at IT will be the next city manager, yes.
Wow, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's what it sounded like, right?
Okay. As, as, as part of the succession planning, we will be adding a, requesting an additional IT director position, if we can get funded for it. We'll continue to provide staff with ongoing turnoff duties.
It's not an additional IT Assistant Director of IT, it's the addition of a new position. I got you, we'll get through this together, James.
I haven't had one of those before, so I don't know what to think about that. I know, I know, you were wanting me to leave.
I thought we saved the best for last, but now I'm rethinking.
And then we're, lastly, we're going to regularly assess our initiatives and effectiveness and cost. So we are constantly looking at the, our vendors that we're using, and see if there's anything out there that actually we can do cheaper, so. And then the last slide is a blatant upcoming cybersecurity training for everyone in June. Please, y'all did a wonderful job last year. This is a yearly thing, we are mandated, mandated by the state to submit this, so it's going to be coming out. I would really appreciate your effort in that. And that's it, that's all I have, if you have any questions.
So you don't want us to report that as phishing?
Please do not report that as phishing. That would not be good, thank you.
Any, any questions? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
I'll briefly say, just Mayor, briefly, if you don't mind, since this is our last annual report, that you obviously heard some consistent themes throughout all of the presentations, right? Some chat, issues with retention, with recruitment, challenges with keeping up with the rising costs of certain items, some challenges just associated with really just maintaining what we currently have, right? And so I think that's something to be mindful of as we go into the process to, to develop next fiscal year's budget, because we plan on being very intentional with focusing on rolling out a pay program, which we're, of course, working hand-in-hand with the Compensation Committee on, to hit on the, a lot of the challenges that many of the departments describe, but also hitting on, basically trying to keep up with the increased cost of things like fleet vehicles and other one-time expenditures. And so for us, and for me, it's a priority to ensure that we focus for the foreseeable future on getting on a sustainable path to keep making sure we can afford what we're doing now, while focusing the added parts on things that are critical to the sustainability of our organization, things like succession planning. And so expect that to be the focus on my end as we proceed with the development of next year's budget.
Very good, all right. And we do have a short executive session, I understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it is 6:15, why don't we take a 10-minute break? And then we will be back here at 6:25 in executive session.
The city council recessed for executive session on the first day of April 2025 at 6:15. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.